You mind doing that?
Jason's like, huh?
I do well on this.
She walked out today and I moved back.
Almost got away with it.
How we going?
I don't know.
Guess two down the name.
Capital G or something.
I just got a mountain.
What?
No.
Okay, we're alive.
Okay, I'm still not finding that license. Um, is it, um, I'm quick one second.
Yes, and talk about the school of Board of Education.
I gotta get an application for this thing I had dropped so many times.
Right?
Banged up. I'm surprised it even worked.
And here's a little right here, see?
Okay, I'm just gonna send you this one.
Well, that's where he goes.
Hold up.
So everyone might have made it through the snow.
Is there music playing?
Yeah, I'm trying to find music on that guy's stuff.
No pull muscles in the snow. Can you even get out to the house on the lake when it's like this?
Well, so they pushed all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac. And then that whole lane is our driveway, shared driveway. So the wormans were gone. Jackson was working from home, so he was stuck. So Steve took a tractor out and just pushed the whole.
Oh, she had a tractor out there?
No, trailer, yeah, just trailered a tractor out there and pushed the whole driveway.
Sometimes because of the.
The what?
Trees, it doesn't get as covered as much.
Yeah, it still had plenty.
Did it?
Yeah, because I had stuff to take out there and Steve's like, maybe I better cut you a path first. So that would be nice. It's kind of a long walk. Yeah, I'm gonna talk to you after that.
I actually. Found a road that I didn't know we had in our district.
Really?
When I was out, I didn't go down it.
You and five cat holler that Robin and Helen was found whenever we were doing scholarship deliveries.
There's some interesting, yeah. No, it's down there. The whole time, you looked at the whole lot, you never did so well.
Wow.
Of course, the, you know, Siri's telling you to take this road and that road and, and it's like.
We're down a lane that's just going saying we're on the right path.
I just got the mail.
Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Well, then it does end, but we got.
Oh.
So then we all got to practice our three-point turn.
In front of everybody. Everybody was watching you. Usually what happens is everybody just follows the first one and doesn't stop.
No, and I were first, but then it, we were in the first car, but then it came to a.
That's not a very nice road.
No, and then it's just like, okay.
And Sonia, Sonia Hecker did a really good job with her spreadsheet. She had every name, every address, where does go first, second, third, and then, you know, I would just plug it in really fast. And, yeah. Oh, I missed that turn.
You really only missed one.
Yeah. Please make a U-turn.
That is, is that for the March meeting that's coming up? So we haven't had that. I didn't, did you guys get it?
I just got a mail.
Yes, we have not, no.
We'll do that, that's the beginning more.
It's March 2nd or something is a meeting, but it's, it's.
No, that was for the, the, you know, like the Chicago conference.
Oh, okay.
They mailed them instead of giving them to you in person this year.
Okay.
Gotcha.
We have to move on. We have to move on.
What?
Are you looking for the last training link?
Yes.
It's in the first before packet, too.
Oh, I didn't know that. I had somebody texting me, where, where do I go? I have six oh one.
And there's two of them that you get, on the forecourt and aftercourt. If they want to watch the whole thing.
We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting in order if we can rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with this law of liberty and justice for all.
We get a roll call, Jane.
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane? Yes.
We didn't have anyone who was visiting this evening. We do have Jenny Seacrest, Jennifer Fox, and Jason Fox here this evening. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to the financial report with Mr. Fox.
Okay. At the end of January, we saw fund balances. The net fund balance was twenty-nine million, five hundred thirty thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Operating funds made up twenty-three million, twelve thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. And HLS funds made up three million, four hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. In the education fund, we received revenues locally in the amount of three million, seven hundred thirty-two thousand, twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. From state, we received five hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. And from federal government, we received one hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. In your packet, all expenses over five thousand dollars are broke out separately, so you can see those. And our recommendations for this month are to reimburse the interest account in the amount of one hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. And the payment of bills totaling four hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Are there any questions regarding the financial report? In hearing none, we would need a motion to approve the financial report to reimburse the interest account in the amount of one hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. And the payment of bills in the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brad, we have a second.
Second.
Second, Robin, roll call.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane? Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Angie? Yes.
Moving on then to the consent agenda.
Starts on page ninety-three. We have minutes enclosed from our January twenty-fifth regular board meeting. We had a special board meeting on February fourth, our facilities and transfer, facilities and transportation committee on February fourth, and a personnel committee on February eighth. The cafeteria reports on page one oh seven. We didn't have any student teachers. Fundraisers are on page one oh nine, and those are. The EHS baseball team is taking donations through reaching our goal. It is to raise funds for the baseball program. That'll be held March first to April thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. And the junior high student council will be conducting a bake sale during lunch hours, selling Little Debbie snack cakes. That is to raise funds to support school-wide projects such as train cars, school trivia prizes, et cetera. That'll be March eighth through the twelfth. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? Now we need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Robin, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Second, Jane, roll call.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Angie? Yes. Moving on to the correspondence. Unit forty board and staff, thanks so much for the garden stone in remembrance of my dad. So thoughtful and kind, Paula Bullard, she is a cook at the high school. Board of Education, thank you for the stepping stone that was sent for the funeral of Mary Weedman. Your thoughtfulness was greatly appreciated. Howlin' Penny Weedman. Your kind, kind expression of sympathy is gratefully acknowledged and deeply appreciated. The family of Mike Coons. Gwen Coons is a cook at EHS and Mike is her husband. And that is all for the correspondence. Go ahead and move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, a couple of things to talk about. First of all, enrollments enclosed. We have two thousand three hundred and fifty-six students as of January twenty-ninth. No FOA requests this, this, this month. The foundation report is also enclosed. Mr. Shute could not be here this evening. I looked through there. It was in the packet. Are there any questions? We could try to answer those or. I do know that, I think Mr. Shute mentioned last month about a grant for high school only that is, is in the process. And so I know they're working on that at the high school as well. So, so questions, I'll, I'll move on. Just wanted to point out a couple of positives. First of all, Todd Taley, our director of, our maintenance director, researched and found that the district, there's LED project out there that could replace all the bulbs in the district. As you can imagine, with five buildings that we use, right? We have seven, but that we use, there's quite a bit of, quite a few bulbs in the building, in the buildings. But, you know, over the years, we've also worked at trying to upgrade those. And so some of our buildings have been upgraded, but some of them have not. And so information I shared with you, he planned and ordered over five thousand bulbs. And his team, they're working on finalizing replacement, the last time I heard. I don't know that they're, they're quite done yet. They're close. But the project costs twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And the rebate was twenty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So basically, for under two hundred and fifty dollars outfitted five thousand bulbs in our district, which will help not only now, but in the, in the, in the future. And I said, I shared with you projections, right? These are projections. But, you know, talking about eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars a year savings. And that over twenty years is about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So kudos to, to Todd and his staff for seeking this out, researching it, moving forward and getting it done. And like I think Mr. Fox said, they're pretty close to being wrapped up. So kudos to him. Also jeans donation. If you saw on our Facebook page, every Friday, we allow staff to wear jeans and they make a donation. Each, each building gets to pick their own donation. But that information was shared and five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars was collected during the first semester. And so the provide, a variety of groups won't, won't list all those, but some are groups and some are individuals in need. But I want to thank all the Unit Forty staff and participants. It's just another way Unit Forty is making a difference in our community. So I want to make sure that you're aware of that. And then also, just, you know, one of the goals from the board is to make sure that we have a sound financial basis. And we work hard to do that on, every day. And obviously with things that are going on, that sometimes becomes difficult. However, our district is in a sound financial basis. And as many people know, federal government's going to be, there's already been CARES One, which was last spring. I kind of shared that information with you. CARES Two, we should know here in the next week or two what those funds would include. And then I also heard today that they're actually gonna vote on a CARES Three this month. And to hopefully to the, to the president by March fourteenth. Whether we agree or disagree on that, it is happening. And so CARES Two's already happened. That was in December that that was passed. Usually takes a little while to trickle down to exactly how much and what that money can be spent on. So, kind of shared with the board, just some options moving forward. But I just want the, the board to know and the public to know that we're utilizing, trying to leverage those funds to help our district become an even out more and better and excellent district for our students. And so just want to make sure that we touch on that and open it up, any questions if there are any. Hearing none, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Can go ahead and move on to the new business. Just to approve the amended twenty, twenty-one calendar and set the end of the year dates.
So as a prognosticator, last month I said we need to wait another four weeks. So, yeah, I got that one right, right? So, so obviously we've used two emergency days. However, with the options that we have this year, that still keeps us on track to move forward with what we talked about, or at least what I presented last month. Being able to have the twenty-first on a Friday of May, being a school improvement day. And then remote learning planning days for the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, which is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, with the Teachers Institute the twenty-seventh. Plan to talk with the curriculum committee here pretty quick on, in regards to finals, what those might look like or might not look like. So there's no decision on that or recommendation on that yet. But would like to go ahead and set graduation for May twenty-third, Sunday at two o'clock. Obviously, the, the rest of this is set right now as of, we don't have additional emergency days. If we do, then we'll have to make some adjustments. But at this time, we don't want to have anymore, we don't plan on having anymore, but that's not our call. So what we'd ask or recommend is that we move forward with the final amended year-end calendar. And then if we have to move forward, we can, we can make adjustments as we move forward. That way the, the graduation's set, people know, I think we've received some phone calls on that already too. So I'd be open to any questions.
Any questions? Okay, if not, we would need a motion to amend the twenty, twenty-one calendar and set the end of year dates as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Steve, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Brian, roll call.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes. Moving on to the Glass and Shepherd to perform the fiscal year twenty-one audit that it costs not to exceed twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Motion. Second.
Steve? Second by Brad. Roll call.
Jane, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Moving on to the Glass and Shepherd to complete the district's fiscal year twenty-one audit that it costs not to exceed twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Motion. Second.
Steve? Second by Brad. Roll call.
Jane, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Moving on to the committee reports. We'll start with the facilities and transportation committee.
Couple of things that we had, we, at the special board meeting, had approved a couple of projects that we did things order. I have a couple we want to bring back tonight. One is the central side basket project. The side baskets at Central are not motorized. They have a hand crank and it's very high up on the wall. And the only way for our staff to get to it is to bring out the bleachers, stand as high up as they can and hold the drill above their head, or to climb a ladder and hold a drill above their head and try to put it down. We have had our, our head custodian out there, Richard Back, one of the ones trying to get this done. So a few years ago, we did a similar project at the junior high and the sports backers and lightning basketball had helped with that. And so we went back to that same company that did that project and we received a quote for forty-six thousand dollars to do it at Central. We have a very talented maintenance staff. So I said, guys, go look at what's done at the junior high. Go out to Central, see what you can come up with. They came up with the exact same mechanisms, everything, for right at eleven thousand dollars.
I like that part.
And so we wanted to come to the board and ask for permission to proceed to do that project and hang, you know, hang those winches, get that, that project going so we can make it a safer environment. It'll be one where, very similar to putting out the bleachers at the high school. You'll plug the remote control into the, the wall and push a button and it'll come down, push a different button and go back up. And they'll have all the same safety mechanisms, so if something were to slip, there's a safety catch, so it'll catch it on the way down and it won't actually come down. So it'll all be done correctly.
We would need a motion then to approve the central basketball goal project at an estimated cost of eleven thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Robin, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Jill? Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill? Yes. Jane, yes. Okay, the board office basement project.
Okay. This is a, a situation where it was really highlighted when we found lots of rotten wood, floorboards and such through Penny's area and then in Mark's office. When we really got to digging down there, we found about seventeen leaks, cracks in the basement walls of the actual basement part, which this building, from this wall here beside me to the outside wall, there's a basement under that. The rest of it is broken into two crawl spaces. So there's a crawl space under us, a, a foundation wall and a crawl space under the business side. So when we got under there, we found lots and lots of moisture, lots and lots of water. And so we brought in a couple of different companies. We brought in Woods Basement System and as well as Helotech, two well-known companies for treating these kind of issues. They both gave us a very, very similar design, putting a high-grade plastic encapsulating the entire basement, putting in a drain, which we drained to our sump pump that we have around the outside wall, sealing all seventeen cracks. And then also hanging a high-volume dehumidifier down there that will run all the time. And constantly pull that moisture out and then pump it out there. In doing so, it'll kill anything that happens to be down there, you know, because caused by the moisture. And so with the difference in the price, Helotech came in at forty-three thousand, Woods Basement System came in at twenty-eight thousand. So we would ask that the board approve moving forward with taking care of the basement in the both crawl spaces for the cost of twenty-eight thousand with basement systems.
Was there any other damage found other than what you found on the basement?
We, we haven't, we haven't gone through all of it to look at that. When we did this floor in here, the carpet, what's that been, five years ago? There was lots of damage in here, we had to replace sheets of it. And so a couple of years, that side will be new carpet and we'll probably do it. We haven't found anything that's of concern walking around on it, so.
You had mentioned, I think, one of the things about the, the height of the building.
Yes. If you walk around the outside of the building, a lot of times when you build, you will actually bring the foundation of your house higher than the ground level. You know, in a house, they recommend anywhere from sixteen to twenty-two inches that you bring the foundation of the ground. Our foundation is exactly level with our ground. So there's no, there's no concrete extending out of the ground to prevent water from running into the basement. And so by putting this plastic up, we will give us a moisture barrier getting into our, our wood. And then we'll also, any moisture that does seep in, we'll have that drain that can kick right in the sump pump and get it out here.
Is there anything we need to do around the exterior of the building so the water doesn't come in if it hasn't passed?
Yeah, if you notice, we, we had to take down the trees, they were causing part of the problem with the basement, they were pushing down the walls. Causing some of that cracking. So we're gonna come back and do some landscaping now that we have a different look in the outside of our house. And we will put drainage tile around the outside of the building to try to run it out and get it away, so.
Does either of these companies have a warranty, you know, that that's not gonna happen again once they do all of this work?
Yeah, both companies are warranted for ten years on the product. Now, they both have different, different methods of patching the cracks. But both of them have a history of, you know, they've both been in business over twenty years. And so pretty confident that they'll do that. One puts a ceiling in the crack and then puts an adhesive over it out on the outside. The other one puts adhesive or ceiling in there and then does a paint ceiling line. So it's two different things, very similar.
And they both have the same warranty?
They both have a ten-year warranty on, on their product, so. Now, one thing we will have, we'll have maintenance on the dehumidifier because we'll have to change the filters, do things like that. We do that on all of our stuff already, so.
And that's easily accessible for you to get to?
What they usually do, like, they'll want to put it under this one, so it'll be centrally located between the two. And what we'll do is we'll have to cut a section of the floor, probably in the elevator closet inside there, where we just open up this hatch and we can reach in and change out the filter and put it back. That's what they normally do. And since we have a closet inside that room, it's completely outside, that's probably what we'll put that, so.
We might be looking for volunteers to crawl under there.
I don't believe Steve. It's pretty exciting.
Okay, we would need a motion then to approve the board office basement project at an estimated cost of twenty-eight thousand with Woods Basement Systems.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brad, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Moving on to the curriculum committee report.
Okay, and I'll let Shelley jump in here as well. But administrators and Shelley have been working on a summer bridge program for Unit Forty. And basically, just some points of emphasis. In the past, Unit Forty's had a, a summer program, it's been a retention-based program. And this would not be a retention-based, but more of a support and recovery situation. Matrixes are being finalized now on, on who would be eligible, what students would be eligible. And so some of the items would be student data, testing data, grades, teacher recommendation, attendance, those types of things. You know, we, we don't know exactly the numbers until we get to matrix and see where we're at. Initially looking at twenty per grade level, but it may be more than that. We don't know yet, and as soon as we have a better idea, if the board approves moving forward, then we'll start that process and get that back to the committee, you know, as soon as possible to, to kind of move forward. We would offer positions, you know, if, if the board approves, moving forward tomorrow, we'd send a, an interest letter out to staff on who might be interested, who might not be interested. But we obviously want Unit Forty staff, our staff doing this at all possible. And then I'll let Shelley talk about this, the curriculum part of it, in regards to what emphasis those might be.
Well, we're, we're really looking at, is focusing in on skills that need to be mastered, but maybe at our current grade level. So when we look back at, just in general, there's always students that have some skill gaps to move on in their next grade level. But now with COVID, we have a lot more to contend with, more students.
And that's easily accessible for you to get to?
What they usually do, like, they'll want to put it under this one, so it'll be centrally located between the two. And what we'll do is we'll have to cut a section of the floor, probably in the elevator closet inside there, where we just open up this hatch and you can reach in and change out the filter and put it back. That's what they normally do, and since we have a closet inside that room, it's completely outside, that's probably what we'll put that, so...
We might be looking for volunteers to crawl under there.
I don't believe Steve.
It's pretty exciting.
Okay, we would need a motion then to approve the Board Office Basement Project at an estimated cost of $28,000 with Woods Basement Systems.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brad, do we have a second? I'll second. Roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Moving on to the Curriculum Committee Report.
Okay, and I'll let Shelley jump in here as well. But administrators and Shelley have been working on a summer bridge program for Unit 40. And basically, just some points of emphasis. In the past, Unit 40's had a summer program, it's been a retention-based program, and this would not be a retention-based, but more of a support and recovery situation. Matrixes are being finalized now on who would be eligible, what students would be eligible. And so, some of the items would be student data, testing data, grades, teacher recommendation, attendance, those types of things. You know, we don't know exactly the numbers until we get to Matrix and see where we're at. Initially, looking at 20 per grade level, but it may be more than that. We don't know yet, and as soon as we have a better idea, if the board approves moving forward, then we'll start that process and get that back to the committee, you know, as soon as possible to kind of move forward. We would offer positions, you know, if the board approves, moving forward tomorrow, we'd send an interest letter out to staff, and who might be interested, who might not be interested, but we obviously want Unit 40 staff, our staff, doing this at all possible. And then, I'll let Shelley talk about this, the curriculum part of it, in regards to what emphasis those might be.
Well, we're really looking at, is focusing then on skills that need to be mastered, but need to their current grade level. So, when we look back at, just in general, there's always students that have some skill gaps that move on to their next grade level. But now with COVID, we have a lot more to contend with, more students, more gaps. So, we'll be looking at areas primarily to focus math and reading, and looking at mathematical fluency, mathematical and number sense, and then also concepts and skills, which would be the application aspect. And then with reading, we're looking at learning awareness, phonics, just reading fluency in general, and then comprehension, and working in some writing where we can also. The thing is, is we won't have them all day long, five days a week like we do, you know, typically. So it's trying to focus then on those very specific skills that the individual students will need during that time.
So a couple of other items, just to, you know, this is a pretty large undertaking because we're talking about feeding students, we're talking about busing students. So we're talking about, you know, having secretary involved. And then also, I would assume, we haven't really, I don't know if we talked about counselors involved or not, but that's something that we would have to look at. But this is an all-encompassing project, not just, and, you know, it's needed.
Would students have to qualify in both areas at the younger level? Or if they're deficient in just math, but not deficient in reading, would they qualify? Or do they have to be deficient both?
Well, no, the matrix encompasses both. It would be students writing to show a need in one or both. Knowing that we'll only have, you know, we can't serve every single K5 in our district.
Right.
The neediest is what we would work on through the matrix.
And I think what we've looked at is holding it at one spot, right? I think Central School, because we'll be moving in the junior high and possibly some other work being done across some other buildings, so...
We talked about the fact, too, the furniture at Central is more appropriate because we have all the way down to second grade there now, and, you know, up to fifth. So the size of the furniture is very important for children.
We would serve breakfast, so their tummies would be full, ready to learn.
We know we have to address the needs of our students, especially, I mean, always, but especially with the COVID swine that they're experiencing, many of them. And we've already done that for the older students when we purchased the software that they can do credit recovery. So this is kind of the initiative for the K5 students.
So then we would, is there anything else? We would need a motion then to approve moving forward the K35 summer bridge program. Motion by Robin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jill, roll call.
Angie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Moving on to opportunity for sharing by board members. Do I have anything they want to share?
I have a couple of things. Want to give a shout out to David Lorton, he is a custodian at ELC. Heard some really good things about him. He's a fantastic custodian, he is always on top of things. He has helped the staff and the students out there. So we just, I want to say that we appreciate everything that you do, David. Thank you for being a part of Unit 40. Like I said, you're much appreciated by the board, the staff, and the students out at ELC. So thank you for that. Also, wanted to go ahead and mention that Jane had received a certificate of appreciation for involvement in the IASB Delegate Assembly. She also received a pen, so thank you very much, Jane, for being a voice on the, in the assembly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else anyone had?
Yes, real quick, the Mark Wood is IASB, March 2nd? Yeah, Wabash Valley, it's virtual. So if y'all are interested, let Penny know and we'll get you signed up.
Nothing else, we would need a motion and a second to enter in a closed session for collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, student discipline, and the employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district. Motion by Robin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Steve, roll call.
Robin?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Steve?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay, the time is 6:29.